Good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order and we start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now can we start with roll call?
Here.
Fertig.
Here.
Gross.
Here.
Hoffman.
President.
Ibaum.
Here.
Minor.
Here.
Moser.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
City Manager Leon.
Here.
Here. All right, you have before you the minutes of the regular meeting of September 10th. What is your pleasure?
Move we approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you very much. Now, City Manager Amy Leon will give her report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the Commission and public. Just a reminder that on Saturday, October 13th, we will be holding our annual Household Hazardous Waste Collection. There is information on our website regarding household hazardous waste. You can take those things to the transfer station between 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. that afternoon, that morning. The cost per vehicle is $10. Also, this Sunday, the 30th, there is a pancake feed at the Fire Department. I believe that's being put on by the auxiliary. That's from 8:00 a.m. to 12:30. So if you like good pancakes and firemen, you should come out and have breakfast. We did receive a PSA this afternoon that tomorrow, 23rd Street east of West City Limits Road will be closed. Excuse me, West City Limits Road at 23rd Street will be closed, starting at 9:00 a.m. So everyone should be able to get to work and school. They're paving the rest of West City Limits Road, finishing up there. So traffic will be detoured to 21st Street. So any questions on that? Check the PND early tomorrow morning and listen to the radio because there will be a closure. Also, just a report on sales tax. For the month of August, we were up 6.17%. Our year-to-date puts us up 3.59%. So that's tracking the way we would like to be headed for the year. I'd like to have Commissioner Gross give us an update on recent developments with MSAC.
Thank you. At the meeting Friday, MSAC and stakeholders met with Corvus Engineers and information that we had received earlier was being changed. Initially, we were told that MSAC could not be the lead agency. Now they think an interpretation would allow them to do that. I will say the MSAC Board later in the day met and said, "We really need as many sponsors as we can." So my guess is that ultimately we'll end up with multiple sponsors. That's a possibility. And the other issue that surfaced was tribal involvement. They're not sure how to interpret the 1916, or I'm sorry, the 2016 Act with respect to if the tribes become sponsors. That changes a number of issues also. So at this point, we're waiting for Corvus Engineers clarification and then we'll be back to you to proceed from there. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to read that PSA because it wasn't very clear where you said it. Shortly after 9:00 a.m. tomorrow, September 25th, 23rd Street east of West City Limits Road will be closed to traffic. This will allow the contractor on West City Limits Road to complete the concrete installation in that location. The street will remain closed for approximately a week. During the closure, traffic will be detoured to 21st Street, just to be a little more clear on there. Also, for the Commissioner's benefit, we do have some little passwords you can pass around here if you want to view the Dive-In Yankton presentation on your iPad with the "Join Me." Otherwise, it will be behind us on the screen and also I believe it is dropped in your Dropbox. So if you want to join that way when we get to that point in the agenda. I'm happy to stand for questions, Mayor.
Commissioners, any questions for the City Manager?
I do. Manager Leon, could you? I give them a few calls on 8th Street and mostly compliments. "Had a great job and they see the quite improvement." And I think the main thing we want to reassure, the concern I have from constituents is that it will be done this year, this fall. I think that we're, no matter with the weather and if we can assure that.
Well, I can't assure you anything about the weather. But I do, I can assure you that the plan is that it will be done by the end of fall here before winter hits. So the latest update on 8th Street is that all of the main lines for utilities have been installed. And we are making the assumption that there will be positive testing done. The contractor will complete the remaining three water main tie-ins. And then we'll start switching the services lines over to the new line. That will finalize the infrastructure water portion of the project. And then there's only one section of sanitary sewer left for installation on West Side Drive. And then there are some services that need to be completed on Park Street and West Side Drive following the installation of the storm sewer. Then we'll have the paving complete. So we'd like the weather to hold out and be dry and warm here till about December 1st. But yes, they'll make every effort to make sure it's completed. Especially those that live in that area have had a lot of frustration and patience, so we appreciate that.
All right, any further questions? Okay, now is the time for public appearances. So if there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the Commission on an item not on our agenda this evening, please step to the podium. All right, seeing no one moving to the podium, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Number one, establish October 8th, 2018, as the date for the public hearing on the request for a special events retail on-sale liquor license for October 14th, 2018 from Ben's Brewing Company for the parking lot and green space on the west side of the Meridian Bridge and the enclosed area of Levy Street. Number two, establishing October 8th, 2018, as the date for the public hearing to consider an alley right-of-way vacation request for the south 72 feet of the north-south alley located in, on the north side of the 200 block of Levy Street, which is owned by the Gurnee Redevelopment LLC. What is your pleasure?
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any further, is there any further discussion amongst the Commission? Would anyone from the public like to address the Commission on either of these items? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you very much. Now moving on to old business. Number one is consideration of memorandum 18-194 regarding the request for a special events malt beverage on-sale retailer's license and a special retail on-sale wine dealer's license for Saturday, October 27th, 2018 from Checkers, Inc., between 2nd and 3rd Street on Walnut Street. What is your pleasure?
I move the memorandum.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion amongst the Commission? Would anyone from the public like to address the Commission on this item? Roll call.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Ibaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Fertig.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, motion passes. Number two under old business is consideration of memorandum 18-193 regarding the request for a special events retail on-sale liquor license for October 6th, 2018 from Dayhoff Enterprises, Inc., doing business as O'Malley's Bar for the NFAA at 800 Archery Lane. What is your pleasure?
I'll move the memorandum.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further Commission discussion? Would anyone from the public like to address the Commission on this item? Roll call.
Ibaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Fertig.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Number three under old business is consideration of memorandum 18-191 regarding the request for a special events malt beverage on-sale retailer's license and a special retail on-sale wine dealer's license for Friday, October 5th, 2018 from the Lewis and Clark Theater Company at 328 Walnut Street. What is your pleasure?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further Commission discussion? Would anyone from the public like to address the Commission on this item? Roll call.
Ibaum.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Fertig.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Ibaum.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, motion passes. Number four under old business is consideration of memorandum 18-192 regarding the request for a special events malt beverage on-sale retailer's license and a special retail on-sale wine dealer's license for Friday, October 12th, 2018 from the Lewis and Clark Theater Company at 328 Walnut Street. What is your pleasure?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further Commission discussion? Would anyone from the public like to address the Commission on this item? Roll call.
Moser.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Fertig.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Ibaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. And now we're on to new business, which I assume a lot of you are here to hear. Number one, consideration of memorandum 18-196 and resolution 18-67 regarding discussion following a presentation by Dive-In Yankton. And I'm just going to set the stage here. First, we're going to have Dive-In Yankton present their plan to us. Number two, the Commission will have an opportunity to ask Dive-In Yankton representatives questions about this presentation. And then we'll have city staff explain the options the City Commission has relating to a proposed property tax opt-out and a total financial package to potentially fund the project. Then we'll have public input on the project. And finally, we'll ask City Manager Amy Leon to provide the Commission with the staff recommendation on how the Commission should proceed. And so with that, I would like to address the room here before we get started with Dive-In Yankton. For some of you, this is your first Commission meeting, so we really appreciate you being here and being engaged in your community. Dive-In Yankton comes before us this evening after spending more than a year working with staff, engineers, and the public toward a goal of building a new aquatic center. You have gathered community input from people of all ages and abilities. You've developed an aquatic center plan based on that input. You've raised awareness, you've raised money, and you have worked hard to be inclusive and transparent. And after discussing a new aquatic center on and off for the last 15 years at least, you have taken this issue to a level of awareness and urgency that we have not seen in previous efforts. You organized a day-long radio-thon that involves all of our local media companies. And just this last Saturday, we saw the letters of dozens of elementary students printed in the newspaper telling us why they think Yankton needs a new aquatic center. You've raised hundreds of thousands of dollars to support this effort. And anyone who has had questions or concerns, you've offered to meet with them and talk through those issues. So I just want to say thank you. Thank you for deciding this was your issue and working so hard to make it a community issue. Thank you for the countless hours you've put into organizing, educating, and fundraising. And thank you for being here tonight to talk with us and all citizens about how it is time to dive in Yankton. And with that, I will turn it over to you, Josh.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. A little close. I promise I'll do a better presentation than Vikings did yesterday up in Minneapolis. Set the tone. You know, it's a milestone for us tonight. I was talking to Mike a week ago. We've been at this two years in March. And I, you know, I don't look at this as a problem or a challenge. I look at this as a labor of love because we've done this, because Yankton deserves this. It's time. And in true Yankton fashion, it's time to take the plunge. So that's why we're doing what we're doing here. And my team that is assembled here, we all have a passion to see this go. And I know this is top of your priority list. So we're going to work through a presentation and I want to hit on a few more highlights. And this is, like I said, two years in the making and it's time to turn this over. This project is in good hands now, but it is our intention to turn it over to the City Commission tonight. And it's time for you folks to take the next step in this journey. So this is the presentation right here that we gave at the Community Forum about a month ago. We're going on a month. And everybody knows why we need a new facility. I'm not even going to get into that tonight because we've already laid the groundwork there. 71 years old, it kind of speaks for itself. Leaking challenges. I think everybody's seen the Facebook information that we put out there. The media did a very nice job of covering this facility. I know Stockwell is here tonight, David's with us tonight, and Doug was with us about a month ago. It is just time. This facility is challenged and, you know, kudos to your city staff that get this thing up and running each and every year. Is it going to fire up next year? I don't know the answer to that question, but we're about yea close to being left without anything. And that is another reason why we're moving forward. Go ahead, Dwayne. As we've planned this out, we've, as Mayor Johnson had said, we've brought the community with us every step of the way. And we intend to do that as we move this down the track. Yeah, we're losing sales tax revenue. We're losing people to Vermillion. We're losing people to Norfolk, Nebraska. It's time. And I guarantee you, those people in those communities that are watching sales tax revenue and the people that come into the community, they're probably hating Yankton right now for trying to do something like this. But you know what? It's time. Because we don't want them people going to Vermillion. We do not want them people going to Norfolk, Nebraska. We want them people to stay right here in our community and use a facility that we have designed as a community. Go ahead, Dwayne. This is what could be. You know, when I was here probably six or seven months ago, I asked you to close your eyes and we took a trip down Memory Lane. And I asked you what a facility would look like up in Memorial Park. Right here is a snapshot of what we could have in our community. And other communities around us, this is exactly what they're experiencing right here. So Lewis and Clark Lake, this is another reason why we have been so adamant about this aquatic facility. Two million visitors out in our state park on the South Dakota side and the Nebraska side each year. And we know that we could attract those folks into Yankton to stay at our aquatic facility. We know that we lose campers to Vermillion and Norfolk, Nebraska. We want those folks to stay here. From my perspective, you know, I did this because this is very important to me. I have kids. But I did this also because of workforce development. I've said all along, you have to do quality-of-life projects for people to come to your community. They can choose where they work, live, and play. And we do have 500 jobs available in Yankton. They're very well-paying jobs. But guess what? This is not an isolated incident to just Yankton. Other communities have the same challenges we do. But the ones that are doing quality-of-life projects like we're working on right now, they're going to get those people. We need to be that community that takes on some of these quality-of-life projects, gets these big wins for Yankton. And let's bring them people to Yankton and have them be a part of our community, raise their kids, raise their families. It's a giant circle and we need to be right there at the top if we want to attract those people into our community. So the timeline, I'm not going to go through this. This slide right here talks about where we started and where we're at tonight, which is September 24th, City Commission meeting where we turn this project over to you folks. You know, existing conditions and considerations. We've went through this. We've created the need. We've talked about the different needs. A letter to the editor that went in, I believe it was today in the paper, that talked about ADA compliance and folks with disabilities that can't use our current facility right now. That was a very well-written article that struck home for me too. And that is highlighted right up there. We need to have a facility that accommodates all age groups and all people. And that article this morning hit right on the nail, one of the challenges that we have in our current facility. Go ahead, Dwayne. This is the procedure that we went through here about a year, a year ago now. And we brought the community together. They had a chance to visit with Stockwell folks, water technology, and they had a chance to put bullet points on to what amenities they wanted to see in the facility. These are the amenities that rang loud and true. Go ahead, Dwayne. And this is what our master plan concept, this is our dream, this is our vision right here of how we want this facility look, Concept A. We brought two concepts for the general public to vote on. Concept A won out with the parking lot on the south side of the aquatic facility. And there it is, right there, the final concept. Okay, Dwayne. North perspective looking in. This would really enhance our park. This is a good-looking facility. And when I show this to my kids, their friends, and everybody that takes a look at this, the excitement is contagious on this, on the new design of this facility. Go ahead, Dwayne. South perspective. From 21st Street looking in. And I believe this is Douglas. Is that correct, David? That's Douglas right there. Yep, Douglas. Existing facility compared to the new proposed facility, much bigger. Someone asked me, "Why didn't you just build what Vermillion has?" Can't do it. If we had Vermillion's facility in Yankton, we'd turn people away on a daily basis. And the number-one regret that Vermillion has is they didn't build it big enough. Okay, Dwayne? This is a slide that would look at comparable costs if communities that have already done this project were to build today. For example, when we talked about Kiron's facility during our Community Open House, their facility today, in today's dollars, would be about $16 million. And all the other communities that have done this around us, they're about the same amount of money that we would be spending today in terms of our project costs. Go ahead, Dwayne. You know, the proposed cost is going to be between $14.5 and $14.8 million. And I just want to stress one key point. The longer we wait, the longer we delay, the cost goes up. Okay, next slide. And this is the municipal bond concept that we talked about, right here with the general public. And I know you have that information in your packets and I know you're seeing on your presentations in front of you. This is the concept that we have started to work with here. And you know, right there, that bottom note said, "More people to move into Yankton, people pay less." It's why we're trying to do this. That's why we're trying to create this win for Yankton. And as I said, price tag on this project is only going to increase with time. Longer we wait, the longer we do nothing, price goes up. And if we're without a facility in that park, it would be a shame. And then I, this was an interesting question that was thrown out when we were over at Yankton High School. One of the faculty members asked the question. We're one of two schools in the Eastern South Dakota Conference that does not have a new aquatic facility. That's kind of interesting. It's just some facts. You know, swim team, they've had challenges. They've came to us, they've worked with us. It's a challenge to bring swim meets into the community with the state of our current facility. It's just time. And there's some pictures of what we're working with there. It's in tough shape. And that's why we are doing what we're doing. I just want to hit on a few highlights here and I know some of my Dive-In Yankton committee members would like to chat. Some of the highlights that we have done over the last year and a half. We've done a lot of education and we've done a lot of fundraising. We've done a fair amount of open-house events to educate the community on what we're doing. Holiday Festival of Lights Parade. We did the open house in August, which brought in $12,000 in one night. We did eight open-house events at all Yankton schools before school started, thanks to the folks in the room that made that possible. I know Dr. Kendall's over there in the corner. Thank you, Dr. Kendall, for allowing us to do that. We presented to all the faculty and all the schools in Yankton. We've been to the Yankton Service Club organizations. We had a popcorn night at the Yankton Bucks game, $22,000 on one Friday night. We did the Riverboat Days Parade. We had an information setup at one of the booths down at Riverboat Days and the Radio-thon. $120,000. When I started that morning before we went on the air at 6:00, I thought $15,000 was realistic. And I know some of our media partners in the back, thank you to you gentlemen that are back there that made that happen. I know we had one heck of a whirlwind about 20 to 7:00, didn't we, Hammer? When the challenge was issued. $120,000 in one day. That goes to show you right there that the community is behind in this project. We did the Homecoming Parade and the Penny Drive. This one absolutely floors me with what the kids have done in all the schools in Yankton. Today, the ladies told me we cleared $7,800 on this Penny Drive. A penny drive. And we're not done yet. This is the last week of it, so there will be more money coming in there. You know, we've had businesses and individuals who reached out to Dive-In Yankton. You know, Lou Ann Kennedy did a Lou LaRoe fundraiser. That approached us. That was pretty amazing. Dive-In Yankton Car Wash is an extreme car wash. Annie at the Pizza Ranch hosted pizza nights for Dive-In Yankton. You know, Everly Bruning, first grader at Lincoln Elementary School, selling watermelons and she donated the proceeds to Dive-In Yankton. I don't know if Amy's in the crowd tonight, but one of the toughest things that Everly had to do was turn over a $100 bill. You know, but that just goes to show you that kids are getting what we're doing here. Kristy and Kyle Tackey's daughter sold lemonade in Memorial Park and donated money to Dive-In Yankton. We had a little boy in a kindergarten class at Stewart Elementary who brought his piggy bank in when we started the Penny Drive. He broke it open and he dumped all the money out of his piggy bank into the bucket for that Penny Drive. That is awesome. That's just some of the stories that we've encountered on this journey. And if the kids get it, we adults should get it. It's just time that we need to do something like this for our community, a big win. So I got a couple of special thanks here before I let some of our committee members speak. All of our financial contributors, to those who have donated money and signed pledge cards. I know we're over 300, 300 businesses and individuals that have contributed money. To all the volunteers that are not part of the Dive-In Yankton team that have helped us out, Radio-thon. We've had just random people walk up to us and say, "Hey, I want to help." To those that walked in the parade with us, thank you. A big thank you. And a huge thanks to my Dive-In Yankton team that are here. There's a lot that I'd like to say to each and every one of you, but I can't say enough thanks for everything that the Dive-In Yankton team has done in this last year and a half. We're not done yet. And my sincerest thank you to everybody that has a vision to see this go. We have pledged today just shy of $870,000. If that isn't a statement, I don't know what is. And anybody that would like to tell the kids that we're not going to get this aquatic facility put together, I dare you to tell them that. I dare you. In fact, in the words of a Christmas story, I double-dog dare you. We're going to get to a million, I do know that. We've got a lot more pledges out there and our goal as Dive-In Yankton is to go above and beyond that. My challenge to you, City Commission, we've given almost two years on this project. And we're turning this project over to you. This is your chance to put a mark on this community in the most positive way possible. This has been tried numerous times in the last 12 years and has not been accomplished. Okay? This is your chance as a Commission to cement your legacy and move this project forward. So as we turn this over to you folks, my challenge to you is, let's get this done. Let's do it together. And let's get this win for Yankton.
Hello, my name's Mike Villanueva of the Dive-In Yankton Committee. First, I'd like just to say thank you to the Commission for being here tonight and for hearing this. Thank you to all the supporters that are out there. Thank you to all the people that had questions and have asked them publicly. I really hope we've answered all those questions and we've done our due diligence. What I'd like to say is that I firmly believe, I'm very excited. I really feel this may be a catalyst. This pool project may be a catalyst for Yankton to keep moving forward, to be progressive, and to grow. I'm really excited and I hope when you are voting tonight, you think about that. Thank you. Thank you.
Pauline Ackland with Dive-In Yankton and previous city commissioner. I come to you tonight to remind you that well over 12 years ago, we went to a vote, and that pool facility was a little over $6 million. And that saddens me, breaks my heart. Nine years ago, I was on the commission, and we did a study. We paid for a study, we revamped it, we took things out of that $6.2 million pool project, got it down to four, I forget exactly what it was, Al, but I think it was like 4.2, 4.5. Still didn't pass. Could not get it past the city commission. Three years after that, we did it again, did another revamp, wanted to do it in stages. And I plead with you tonight to get this done. And as Josh said, let this be your legacy. We'll let you have the first dive in. How that, how's that? We'll let you dive in first. It's, but it's time to move on with this project. I would also ask, and I don't know if this is the time to do it, but I'm going to anyway. You're putting in $2 million. And I'm sorry, but as a citizen, as a past commissioner, that's not enough. I would ask you to put in a minimum of another $725 per year until it's paid off out of the second penny. You have a couple of weeks to, to figure that out. But I would like us to show the community that you truly want this project and that we need to take that plunge together. But please be a part of that history. Make history, and let's get this project done for this, for the citizens, for the children. You've, you've heard all the testimonials. It's time. Thank you.
Dive-In Yankton, are there any more presenters on your side?
No. Do you have any questions for our group?
That would be the next, commissioners, any questions you wish to ask of Dive-In
Just to echo Mayor Johnson, I appreciate every one of you. I've seen the community come together, and I just get so excited over the, the attitude, you know, that we can do it. And I hope that, that everybody keeps the momentum going, and I appreciate everybody and their, their coming forward and on this project. Just thank you to everyone.
Anyone else? All right. Now, city manager Leon and...
I'm coming.
Are you part of, are you part of Dive-In Yankton?
Just a supporter.
Oh, you are? Okay.
I'm not in the committee, no.
All right. We're going to have public input in just a little bit, so if I could ask you to wait just a little bit.
Whatever you want, I'll do.
Okay. Thank you very much. Amy and Al, if you could walk us through the potential funding package for this project?
Sure. So Al and I will tag team here this a little bit. And this is, you know, these are approximations because we don't know the final funding amount that's been raised by Dive-In Yankton yet. There's still pledges coming in. It sounds like the kids have a lot of cash on hand that they're still bringing in the Penny Drive, so I don't know what's going to happen there.
I just want to add, I've heard of a couple parents who have said, kids have actually stolen their piggy banks. And like in one case, there was a family vacation fund, the kids took it and left a note, said, hey, sorry, we had to take this, but we hope you understand this is for the pool project. So it's fun to hear stories like that.
I guess they can really say it's for the kids, right? So, so we're talking here in estimates, and, and of course, the, the slide that was up relating to the property tax opt-out is also an approximation. But what the bond is based upon is a $12 million bond, and that's the slide that you saw. What we're factoring in is the $2 million that's allocated already in your capital improvement fund. And I don't want anyone to misunderstand what I say, that's already public money. So, you know, when we say we're budgeting money already, that's public funds, so that's already public money that's being budgeted, being planned. So that's taken out of what we might use for roads or what we might use for a different type of project out of the second penny. We're planning to spend $2 million of that public money, as of right now, anyway. And then taking into account those monies that we're fundraising. So we're making the assumption, the estimate, that the bond will be approximately $12 million for 20 years. And based on your assessed, excuse me, your equalized value of the home, there is a chart there, which we will be happy to share with anyone who's interested, what that would mean annually for your taxes, what that would mean monthly for your taxes, and then it's broken down even to what the daily cost may be. So if that's what the commission chooses to move forward with, that $12 million amount, that's what that would look like for the property, for each individual property owner. So basically, what would happen is, my recommendation is that this resolution would be considered at your next meeting on October 8th, and that would be a meeting where you would vote whether or not to pass that property tax increase to, onto the residents. So you would have a couple options at that point when that came onto your agenda. You could do nothing, not, not take any action. You could determine that you want to hold a special election and place that on the ballot for a public vote, to let everybody in the public come and vote for that. If the commission believes at that point that you have enough information and you have enough knowledge of what the community is looking for, and that there is enough public support associated with the project, you could vote to approve that resolution at that time. Barring anything else that we find out in the next, I guess, 14 days, that will be the recommendation that I will be giving you from staff. If the commission believes that you have enough information and there is sufficient public support associated with the project, or if you don't believe there's sufficient support for the project, you could vote to deny that resolution that evening. So you have a couple options there. So at that point, you know, that we do have a public process. If you do go ahead and decide to vote on that and vote for it, either in favor of it or vote against that resolution, there is an opportunity for referral 20 days after publication, you know, the, of the resolution, the public can refer that action, either action, either your action to deny or your action to approve. If that referral was successful with sufficient signatures, et cetera, then a special election would be, would need to be set. So that's really the process and the options. Al and I are happy to visit with you more and answer your questions about the actual funding and how that would come together. We can talk about the fundraised funds, we can talk more about the second penny and what's already been allocated, or we can talk more about the opt-out as well. As a reminder, one of the things that we worked on as a commission and as an organization was our mission this year, which you set to be, to provide exemplary experiences, services, and spaces that create opportunities for everyone to learn, engage, and thrive. My recommendation to you would be that as you take input over the next couple of weeks, you keep that mission in mind, because I think the work here of Dive-In Yankton really exemplifies what is written in those words, and the fact that they've engaged so well to make that mission a reality, I think is poignant. And I'm certainly proud that I've gotten to be a part and, and watch and give some technical advice along the way. So happy to stand for questions from commissioners of the public.
I got a couple of questions. Just hypothetically, if, what is the cost of a special election? What is the cost incurred of a city special election if the city were to put this to a public vote or if it gets referred?
It's approximately $12,000 to $15,000 per election, the way we run our annual elections, so.
And a second question then would be, is, was there other forms of funding that was discussed besides a property opt-out, such as like sales tax or anything like that? And why the property out, property opt-out over that, if that's the case?
Sure. We talked a lot about with Dive-In Yankton and, and with some of you all about what are the options. So we've received the question, you know, could we just pay for the whole thing out a second penny? We just pay for it outright? Well, over time, you know, there could be the 12 or 15 million or whichever number we're looking at here available in the second penny. That's also the funding that we utilize to build roads and, and, you know, remove snow and run our operations and all those other things. So we could do that, but notwithstanding drastically cutting other things or changing other things. Now, when we talked in the budget, we talked about the fact that, you know, could we, since we're getting some of these major projects accomplished, 8th Street, West Salem's Road, all those things, could we have a couple of years where we maybe are not doing such major infrastructure projects? Yes, but that is, you know, $2 million that won't be spent in those other ways. And if the commission chooses to do something different, a different amount, that's your purview. So we talked about that. We talked about the third penny. That's that bedboard and booze penny. And we use that for all kinds of different promotions, you know? Part of that goes to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, part of that goes to YPG, part of that goes to pay for some of the events and promotional things we do, like the Fourth of July fireworks, all those things. So we could not do those things for quite a few years. That's about a $630,000 per year, I guess, penny. But those things are important and priorities as well to our community. And I think things like this will actually grow that penny, of course, with Casey's help. But these are the types of facilities that actually increase that so that you can allocate funding towards more promotional type things and getting more people to come and stay and play in Yankton. I've personally gotten a lot of questions. This is, well, just do it like Vermillion did, pay for it the way Vermillion paid for it. And Vermillion is paying for theirs through a municipal liquor markup that they're able to have. They have a different type of revenue source than something Yankton does not have, which is a markup on their liquor. We do not have that, so that's not something that's within our ability to do. We can't all of a sudden just impose a new tax on, you know, on our liquor distributors or things, things like that. So they were able to pay for theirs with a different revenue source that we don't have. So we talked about a number of different ways that we could fund the aquatics facility. Dive-In Yankton's proposal, I thought, was really strategic and well thought out in that they wanted to show the community need and vested interest in the community, not just through what they're currently, the current public funds, that's the city budget, but also through their own private personal funds. And it's pretty moving by the time you have folks that maybe, you know, $5 to them is a big deal, or $100 is a big deal to them. And they're, they're donating that to a project. That's pretty telling. But then to also couple that with, within the public money that's used to operate the city, willing to make some sacrifices from the city budget, and maybe doing a little less infrastructure-wise or in the second penny to be able to accommodate something like this. And then to ask the public to, the entire public to help us all, whether you're going to be an aquatics facility user or not, knowing that the type of community we're creating by having these types of facilities will certainly benefit us all. So those are the different types of revenue sources we talked about, and if somebody has one, another one they'd like to explore, we can certainly comment on that as well.
And then one more follow-up. The operational costs of the new pool, if I remember right, is about double, I think is what you're estimating. And that is something that, that we are not asking for, right? That is something that the city will absorb within their current budget?
Correct. And I have done a little bit of research. I, I had a good discussion actually recently with the city manager and Vermillion about operating costs and, you know, talking about how those things can be absorbed. Now, we anticipate that we're going to have higher revenue because we're going to have more users, so that's going to be, help us as well. Also, you know, we'll have a rate structure. We're not going to be able to make the rates pay off the, you know, we could never charge rates to pay off the cost of the project or anything like that, but we also have continuing rates. And we'll need to make some choices, you know, on doing things to make sure that we can operate. We'll also probably have some savings as well, because we'll have a new facility, probably there'll be a little more efficiencies in the new facility. Now, it'll be bigger, so those things probably, you know, there'll be more of the utilities and things like that, but there'll probably be more efficient ways to utilize the facility. Also, the facility itself will offer and lend itself, the way I understand the facility, to be more than just aquatic facility in that there is a splash pad area that can operate outside of the pool, so it can extend the life of the pool longer. Now, that's probably not a revenue source for the city at all, but a concession area also focuses on the entire park, not just the aquatics portion of the park. So the concession area may be an opportunity for other sources of revenue as well. And I'm certainly not suggesting that we're going to be able to operate the pool just on the number of Mr. Frieze's we sell, but all those things come together and help that out. So I think we're, we're ready to absorb, and I would say even a better word, is to make adjustments in our budget to make this happen for the community, because it's a priority. And just like any of your budgeting priorities, if you say this is something we want done, we find a way to do it. So, thank you.
I know these questions keep rolling in now, but maybe this one, Josh, maybe you can answer. When you went through the design stage of this, was there already talk about, you know, hopefully, hopefully we have Vermillion's problem, okay, when we have too much and we're turning people away, about the ease of expansion, if it ever came down to that part?
My name's David Locke, landscape architect with Stockwell. We worked on this project with Josh and his team. And one of the things that, we went through a number of different iterations when it comes to looking at the design of the pool or aquatic facility and making sure that it accommodates users, not just for today, but in the future. And so you saw a graphic up there in regards to what's the, kind of the maximum capacity of this facility that could be accommodated at one time. And that's upwards of 1,200 users. And I guess I wish Todd was here to kind of explain how many you guys are currently at right now. And off the top of my head, I'm sorry, I can't think of what that is unless, Amy, you have that number.
I think peak days, we've had close to 600.
Right. Yeah. That's why, that's what I was thinking, but I didn't want to misspeak myself.
And since you called Todd out, I will remind the commission that Todd is at a conference, a work-related conference, otherwise he would be here.
So we wanted to be able to accommodate that growth in the facility and in the community. There's also, you know, programmed in turf space into the facility as well. And if there is in the future the need to potentially expand certain amenities within the facility, we've, we've done the master plan in a way that lets these different amenities breathe, so that we're not kind of on top of each other from a space standpoint. So there is room to accommodate, you know, potential growth within the, the facility.
I guess, you know, maybe, maybe be a little more on point, I guess. For instance, just for an example, one of them was a wave pool, you know, that was brought up. What if five years down the road, we want to add a wave pool somewhere in the park or expand it, add a wave pool or, or something like that into there? What would be the ease, you know, would that be an easy situation, actually tie that into that system? Or are you talking a whole nother start out, try to re-engineer everything to get everything to work?
Dwayne, can you bring up that map again of the final concept?
It would have to, that would have to be an expansion outside of the existing design. Now, if that's a priority, it's certainly something that, again, this is a master plan, so it's, it's fluid in terms of its design. So, it's fluid in terms of its design. And so, if that, you know, as we move through the detailed design is something that potentially we want to look at, okay, we're not going to program in the specific space or the size of that facility. But what are ways, you know, in terms of looking at the pool mechanical, you know, building? Do we want to leave space in there to potentially future accommodate that? And then what would be the cost to build that facility, that pool mechanical building, you know, larger to accommodate that space in the future so that, you know, we're not building a building that's too small? And then now, it's like you said, now we got to completely re-engineer everything. So, I think that's a discussion that as we get into detailed design, if that's truly something that wants to be explored, that's something that we can certainly look at as a part of the detailed design and accommodating space for that in the future.
I think, you know, I think that's kind of important for me. As we grow, everything else changes. I think, you know, 10 years down the road, I would love to say that we need to, we need to expand somehow. And I would like to make it as easy as possible as a transition to do that for future, future commissions and the public.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's an excellent point in terms of thinking about the growth of the community as well. And that's certainly something that we can program into the facility.
So then, just a quick follow-up. I, what Chris is asking, I think, is spot-on. And it's a great time to be asking this question. You mentioned the turf areas. So, I don't see it up there. But it's the north side of the eight lane pool and then also the northeast side of this as well. But, like Chris mentioned, like a wave pool. Would something like that have to be closer then to this pool, the mechanical? And I guess you don't see it on there either. The...
The pool mechanical building, that's further to the south there.
Yeah. So, if there were to be something added, does it have to be closer to that mechanical building? Or are those other areas possibilities? I'm just curious.
I think, we can certainly, I think that just comes down into sizing the pumps and just the amount of space that you need in that building. If we need, if we want a wave pool to go in the turf space that's on the north side of the existing, or the future 50-meter pool, that's certainly something that we would make sure that we leave the space in order to accommodate that in that future space. Whether that's, you know, a certain-sized pump, certain-sized pipes that we would need to stub out, we would work with water technology to make sure that we accommodate everything that we can as a part of this phase into programming for the future. We certainly don't want to do anything that's going to hamstring us further on down the line.
And I just want to reiterate, the wave pool is just an example, you know.
Yeah, I know. That's fine. That's fine.
Oh, that would be pretty cool.
I'm sensing wave pool as maybe, you know.
You know, any, anything from, you know, additional slides to, you know, you know, maybe something that's not even done now that may be available five, 10 years from now, you know, just to be able to be ready for an expansion the easiest possible.
Yep, absolutely.
Commission, any more discussion? All right. Then let's open it up to public comment. If anyone would like to step to the podium and whether you embrace this proposal or you think it's a bad idea, now would be the time that we would invite you to share your input. And when you step to the podium, please identify yourself and your address for us. Thank you very much.
Richard Erickson at 3011 Mulligan Drive. I'm going to go down memory lane a little bit. So, some of you weren't here 25 years ago when this was voted on, the second penny. This second penny has been a blessing for the commission. They've gotten a lot of extra money to do a lot of extra things that needed to be done. First of all, we paid for the Summit Center. And the rest of the money went to the city for infrastructure and capital improvements, if I recall. As of last year, that second penny brought in close to $4 million, just the second penny only. Of that second penny, on the average of the last six years, the city has paid Summit Center $100,000. $3,900 approximately went to the city for infrastructure and capital improvements. For six years, the second penny has helped the city with their infrastructure and capital improvements. We wouldn't be where we're at today without that second penny. So, thank gosh, we have it. Now, we have Dive in Yankton coming in with a $14.9 million project. This second penny is going to grow every year. Right now, it's at close to $4 million. Every year is going to get bigger and better with our sales increase, which automatically gives us more tax money. Dive in Yankton project will help retail sales and will help the tax. I would like to suggest, and we already had one lady mention it, our proposal, whatever you want to call it, for the city to let go of closest, I'd say 600 to $750,000 a year and pay for Dive in Yankton's project. That still leaves you over $3 million, three and a half million dollars a year for your capital improvements and infrastructure. There isn't too much that would suffer from losing $700,000 a year. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to step to the podium and share their input?
Hi, Nancy and Andy, personal residence 1205 Peyton Lane. But I'm here representing Yankton Area Progressive Growth at 803 East 4th Street. It's really great to see the community come together on a project like this. Having served on the commission, we went through some challenging times when we talked about the dreaded four-word or four-letter word pool in the past. And so, it's really exciting to have a project before you tonight that really is going to make a difference here in Yankton. Josh did a good job explaining why it's important for Yankton to have these quality-of-life projects for the workforce here in Yankton. The pool alone is not going to bring families here to Yankton. So, I want to just clarify that. But what it does is it's another great amenity when people look at Yankton of why they would choose to live here with their families. So, I'm very supportive of this project. I have some differing opinions probably on your second penny, on things that were suggested here tonight because I do value the infrastructure. But I trust you as commissioners and all the information that you have before you, that you are being fiscally responsible for all the citizens here in Yankton. You will put together a good package that will balance the needs of the commission and infrastructure and what you know is coming and the need for this facility. So, thank you very much. And I look forward to continued public support on future projects as well. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to step to the podium? All right. Well, thank you very much. Now, let's have city manager Leon once again state the staff recommendation. And then as a commission, discuss how we would like to proceed.
Sure. So, the staff recommendation, since this is such a major project and does have such a big implication on the city and potentially on the taxpayers, that you do not take action this evening, rather that you give yourselves two weeks to take public input, continue to ask staff the questions that you need to or like to about financing for the project and the project overall, and then come back at our next meeting on October 8th and take action. While certainly you can do something differently, that's what I think is recommended. Although we'd like to think everybody was informed about this meeting tonight and everyone knows about the project. Inevitably, there's some folks that won't hear about it until tomorrow morning when they listen to the radio or take a look at the newspaper. So, I think that's a good way to move forward is to make sure we're getting information and getting input from everyone.
Commissioners, any further input?
I'd agree with the recommendation.
All right. Well, everyone, thank you again for all the energy and excitement that you have fed into this project. It's been a long road. But you're getting closer to an answer. And so, with that, if you want to stay, you are certainly welcome to stay with us for the rest of the meeting. However, if you would like to leave, you're welcome to do that now as well. And then, we hope to see you again in October. Which, what's the date of our October?
October the 8th.
October 8th. Thank you. new business is consideration of memorandum 18-182 regarding Harvest Halloween Festival request for funding. What is your pleasure?
Move the memorandum?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? So, to be clear, we are, you're making a motion to approve the staff recommendation?
Yes.
Amy, could you maybe, for the public's sake, share the staff recommendation?
Sure. Harvest Halloween is requesting funding from the city of Yankton for Harvest Halloween event, which is the 26th and 27th of October. They are requesting a number of items from the city, including some of the, what I would call, event infrastructure like porta-potties and city employee overtime and equipment, a roll-off, et cetera, and also some promotional items or promotional costs associated with the project. So, the recommendation from staff is that because this is the fifth year of the event and it's transitioning into a Meridian District event that the city commission approved, the porta-potties, which is $765, and the in-kind services, including the overtime and the roll-off for the dumpster, and not that they fund the request for funds to be used towards promoting the event and/or signage, printing materials, et cetera. The city provided Harvest Halloween funds in its startup years for those promotional. And this was, and last year was the first year that the city commission actually denied the portion of the funding request. So, we're just encouraging those event organizers, overtime, to become self-sustainable as much as possible.
Any further discussion amongst the commissioners? Would anyone from the public like to address the commission on this item? Kathy, I see you back there. Do you want
Hello, Kathy Cloutre. I just would like to thank you for your past support. I think we've really come a long way with Harvest Halloween since 2014. We have generated as a committee quite a bit of funds on our own. It just seems sometimes this late in the season with such an event in a shoulder season, which is so important, that funds that are donated are a little smaller, maybe because we're one of the last events in the year. So, on a comfort note, it would, it would ease a little bit of stress sometimes coming in the weeks prior to the event, knowing that we had some city support with a contribution towards some of the promoting that we are doing. And I think we've done a great job so far of that in that the attendance has increased every year. We keep adding more activities. The community has benefited by the startups out of Harvest Halloween, like the farmer's market. You know, there's all these good things that are coming out of this festival. And it costs more every year to do that. So, just a little, a little help from our friends can go a long way. And so, we just thought maybe the city would invest in some of these things that will prove to be beneficial to the community. A little thousand, a little bit more than $1,000 to help with offsetting printing costs and promotion. Then we'll have other dollars to spend in other areas and more advertising. So, thank you very much for the past support.
Thank you, Kathy. I know you work very hard on this every year. And it's always a fun event.
Thank you.
Are there any commission questions for Kathy or any further discussion? All right. Roll call.
Benson.
Aye.
Ferri.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Mybon.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye. Motion passes. Number three under new business is consideration of memorandum 18-181 and resolution 18-58 regarding a request by Harvest Halloween for special events parking, which is ordinance number 933, to be in place during Harvest Halloween on October 27th, 2018. What is your pleasure?
Move the memo.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further commission discussion?
I just got one question. I'm looking at the map with the barricades, cones, that kind of stuff. So, you got, there are barricades on the north side of 3rd Street. Is that, is Walnut going to be, 3rd to 4th going to be closed too? Or why are there barricades there?
Longer walk this week. The barricades are there just to show that that portion of Walnut Street will probably not be completed for construction. And so, that's just showing that that portion of the street will still most likely be closed.
Perfect. Thank you.
I have a question on the parking. And looking at the map, it appears that you're coordinating off or closing a parking lot that is currently under construction with a building in it?
Just the open parts will be closed off. And they have gotten permission from First Dakota and Stockwell of the portion that they have. So, they are going to make sure that no one is going into that construction site area. But it'll just be the open parts.
Any more discussion? Would anyone from the public like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Ferri.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Mybon.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye. Motion passes. Number four under new business is consideration of memorandum 18-195 and resolution 18-64, a resolution establishing a base salary adjustment at 3% and a one-step plan for all union and non-union eligible employees of the city of Yankton effective January 1st, 2019. And that will last for the next three years. What is your pleasure?
The memo.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further commission discussion? I would ask our city manager to introduce this item for the public's...
Yes, honorable mayor, members of the commission and public, we have negotiated and reached a tentative agreement with the collective bargaining unit for a salary increase of 3% and a step for three years. So, we've discussed that with the bargaining unit. They have tentatively agreed. And that's for all eligible employees who are still eligible for the step. So... for the step. So we will still continue to negotiate. Next year, we'll, we open up for the other items in the agenda, but, excuse me, in the contract, but this item would be set for three years. On behalf of, I think, all the employees, I can say this is a very generous offer and very much appreciated. Some of our salaries, as you know, are on the lower end of the sort of range of comparable communities of our size, and everyone is very appreciative of this generous offer should the commission vote in favor. Thank you.
I would just say that as a commission, at our annual planning meetings, we've talked about the commitment we need to show to our employees, recognizing the realities of the wage study that Amy just talked about, but also the workforce challenges that we're facing, where it's very competitive, and in order to retain and attract new employees, we have to be a competitive employer. So we're pretty proud of this agreement. And with that, is there any more commission discussion? All right. Anyone from the public, would you like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
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 I will abstain. I have a husband who's a city employee.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion passes. Number five, under new business, is consideration of memorandum 18-199 regarding camping in Riverside Park during the white pierog event on October 3rd, 2018. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Amy, could you tell the public what exactly the white pierog event is?
No, but I think Brittany LaCroix could. I thought it was some kind of a, like, something you eat, like pierogi or something. I was like, really, we're having those?
It is not something you eat. There is a group that does a Lewis and Clark reenactment type event, and they travel along the Missouri, and they will be in Crafton the night before. And so they come, and at 10 o'clock, they want to host a kids' educational presentation, and so they have the white pierog boat, and they do demonstrations, and then they also have six other areas where they kind of demonstrate what the Lewis and Clark expedition was like. And then at 6:00 PM, they have a public one that's open to the public for the same things. And I'm not too familiar with the Lewis and Clark expedition or the white pierog boat that they use, but there is a cannon on there, and then they will be shooting like a rifle that was used back then, and just giving kids and the public a little more information and experience of what it was like for Lewis and Clark.
It's not a live rifle or cannon.
Correct.
It's just a, yes.
Sounds like a good educational event. Is there any further commission discussion on this item? Would anyone from the public like to address the commission on this item? All right. Roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Number six, under new business, is consideration of memorandum 18-198 regarding a bid award for sidewalk along Highway 81 slash Broadway Avenue. What is your pleasure?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Amy, could you talk about this project for us?
Sure. Not a lot to say here about the actual project itself, other than for interest. This is sort of the first project that we're working on in relation to our active transportation plan. So this is the first kind of connectivity project we're focused on here. So this is a bid award that will connect some of the sidewalk, where we currently have folks just creating their own sort of pathways on Broadway, connecting people to our retail areas. And there's a lot of folks there that are using 81 to get to work or get to shopping, and they might not have vehicular transportation, and so this will certainly make it safer for them, as well as, I think, an amenity for people who, who do like to connect with the soft trails by the transfer station and eventually connect with trail out on West City Road.
So again, the winning bid is for masonry components, and that is for $56,507. Commission, is there any discussion on this item? I would just like to add, this is part of the commission addressing this long burning question of why are there not sidewalks in certain areas of town? And our staff looked at all those areas, and they did an analysis and kind of graded them on what priority there would be to get sidewalk. And it's for an array of development issues that sidewalks did not end up in these places, and in a lot of cases, there's nothing we can do about it now, but look ahead and try to address them. So the commission has decided to, or is excited to get this active transportation project underway.
Yeah, Mayor Johnson, I would just say, living out there, it always scares me to see people walking along on the highway when there's not sidewalks, especially when the weather is not very nice. So, yeah, I agree.
All right. Would anyone from the public like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Number seven, under new business, is consideration of memorandum 18-200 and resolution 18-66 regarding a request by March to the Meridian for a special events parking ordinance number 933 to be in place during the March to the Meridian event on October 13th, 2018. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Brittany, do you want to talk about this event for us?
I will actually invite Todd Carr to come speak about it real quick. He knows a little bit more about it than I do, as he is organizing the event, but it is a band competition that is pretty unique and that they are bringing to Yankton. So if you just want to hit on some of the details.
And Mr. Carr also has to sing a bar from The Greatest Showman, please.
I'm all worn out. Just "A Million Dreams" is all we have to work on, right? I would like to, as a community member, like to thank and commend, if I may, Brittany LaCroix for her amazing work, fast work, and especially working with us who have never done something like this before. She was very thorough and obviously knowledgeable in what she's doing. And also, if I may, I'd like to introduce the people that have joined me today. Our color guard instructor is Sarah Brant over there, band booster member, Kristy Westerman, board president, Brian Milbyer, and board member, Brian Hamburger, that have been along for this project. Basically, the March of the Meridian is a band festival that is going to bring 15 communities to Yankton on October 23rd in a combination of parade and field events. The morning is dedicated to a parade downtown with your, with your assistance, that the first of its kind, I do believe, we are taking the bands across the bridge. I don't believe anybody's ever experienced that before, so this is, this is a new journey for us as well. So we bring them downtown, judge them. It's a competition, and they'll receive trophies, ratings, critique from judges around the area. And also in the afternoon, we bring over to Crane Youngworth Field with the new remodels there. It gives us a marvelous place to, to host this event, with Dr. Kendall's help and Mr. Moore's and Dr. Johnkey's assistance. Everybody has done an amazing job to inform us of, of the resources that we have, to provide us with everything that we would, I believe, need, and I think it will just be a great event. And any opportunity to collaborate with the City of Yankton, I think, is, is good for the school. And sorry, I love microphones. Totally sorry.
Okay, you, I think I heard you say October 23rd, but it says October 13th.
13th.
Okay.
I apologize.
And so the, the parade route goes from the Nebraska side of the Meridian Bridge, and then it goes up to Third Street, and then it'll end at the Riverside Baseball Diamond? Is that correct?
Yeah, okay, that'd be good.
We are not 100% positive that Walnut will be done or completed enough where we feel comfortable with walkers from other communities going down there and with spectators coming. So it will go from the Nebraska side of the bridge, across the bridge. It will head east on Second Street to Douglas, where it will head north, and then they will go east again on Third Street to Pearl, where then they will head south over to Levy, if you can picture that.
Okay, just logistics. We're not taking buses across the bridge to drop them off at the start point? I mean, how are they getting over there? And is there areas set up to stage everybody to get them across the bridge, and then the buses go back? Or how's that all working?
The buses will be dropping them off on the Nebraska side, using the new bridge to go around, using Fourth Street to go over to a pickup station on Levy and Pearl, I believe. And then we also have another map that I can send to everyone that shows a staging area for where the buses will be located to pick up the, the students when they are finished marching throughout the parade. Do you have anything to add?
And will there be spectators on the bridge, too?
Probably not room for people on the bridge, because it'll be basically a one-way. We'll start on the opposite end of the bridge, and I measured, it's about 12 feet of clearance, which really isn't going to be much room. It's going to kind of be a one-way thing that morning.
Is that on the lower level?
Yes.
All right. And then we also have a couple benches and, okay.
The 12 feet includes avoiding the benches.
Just the tuba doesn't hit the bench.
It's the bass drums that have a problem with, like, fire hydrants and things like that.
Hey, Todd, do you, it sounds exciting. Do you march on the bridge, or do you just walk? I mean, do you do a, a certain step?
I believe we'll be marching on the bridge, yes.
I know there are dozens of competitions all over, and I just think this sounds like a great way to have a Yankton signature on this event.
I think the best thing about it, we've competed in several events. The one similar is in Laverne, our tri-state band festival, where it's really a community event. You can go to Sioux Falls and have a lot of very, very good bands, high caliber bands, but when you bring it to a community and, and make it, especially the parade part, I think it makes it even a little bit more homey, so to speak.
Yeah, I agree with Amy. This should be a real signature event, exciting for the students, exciting for the residents of Yankton. It kind of reminds me of something you might have seen 100 years ago, or I guess the Meridian Bridge wasn't here 100 years ago. But, you know, in, in our old, older days, when you just had these big community events. So pretty excited to see how this works. I hope it's a success. I hope the weather cooperates. All right. Any more commission discussion? Would anyone from the public like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Number eight, under new business, is consideration of memorandum 18-201 recommending approval of the contracts for group health insurance, dental insurance, and vision insurance for city employees. What is your pleasure?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Amy, did you want to speak about what this would entail?
Sure. And for the record, a peyorgi is a dumpling of Eastern and Central, or Central Europe and Eastern Western Ukraine, so I wasn't totally crazy. I have eaten some similar to that. Health insurance. Along with your generosity in, in pay, the city is, the city and health insurance committee has worked together to come up with a recommendation for our health insurance, and fortunately, because of the city employees' commitment to their health, our health insurance increase was very low this year. So we're fortunate about that. The increase in premiums for 2019 for our current plan, as is, is 1.87%. That's phenomenal. That's a phenomenal rate. So we appreciate the employees being good stewards of their own health. The recommendation is to stick with that plan, that's with Avera Health Plans, and to also add a HSA, which would be an option for folks. The HSA would not be required, but would also be through Avera, and so that's part of the recommendation as well. And then when it comes to vision insurance, Assurant Sun Life is our current provider, and the renewal rate, there's no, no change for the renewal rate for the vision. And dental, we have a slight increase. The renewal rate for 2019 is a 1.7 increase in premiums. So really, that's quite low as well, considering what the cost of the dental insurance is. So we're recommending that the commission approve these renewal rates. There is an insurance committee, and Todd Larson was the non-voting chair of that committee. Dwayne Johnson sat on that committee, so he can answer in any details. Because we're not recommending any change to our provider or to the health insurance plan, it did not need to be negotiated with the collective bargaining unit. However, there were members of the collective bargaining unit, there are members of the collective bargaining unit on that health insurance committee who helped reach that decision. So we're happy to answer any questions that, that you have.
So any further commission discussion?
Maybe just talk a little bit more about the health savings account, since it's part of the motion. So what we're, what we're being asked to approve is the option of a health savings account, but that actually benefits folks in a couple different ways.
Yes, depending upon what the employee chooses. So the HSA account, HSA option is really, it's not really a health insurance option. It's really more of a tax option, if you can look at it that way. But if folks choose that, that's actually a 22.59% decrease in premiums. So the, the committee's recommendation is that if folks want to choose that, that's actually going to be a cost savings to the City of Yankton, and has some benefits for people depending upon what they choose. So we'll encourage employees to attend a health insurance educational meeting, to understand the differences between the traditional health insurance plan and the HSA plan, and to help determine what would be best for them. So if they'd want to enroll in that, they could do so in 2019. I personally have had a health, health savings account in the past, and, you know, I like that plan as well, so it just depends upon each individual. There is a little difference in what you're maybe paying upfront, but you're able to sort of, I guess, for lack of a better word, bank some of those funds for health-related costs and to utilize those. So I don't know, Dwayne, if you want to add more about the health savings account, if you want to give more detail? Certainly welcome to, unless commission has general questions about how it works.
All right. If there's no more commission discussion, would anyone from the public like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Abstain, same reason.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
I am an employee of Avera Health, so I'm going to abstain from this vote. And with that, the motion does pass. So we'll move on to number nine, under new business, consideration of memorandum 18-202 recommending approval of health, of the health insurance committee's recommendation for EAP, flex spending, and supplemental insurance. What is your pleasure?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Amy, is there anything you would like to share on this?
Just wanted to add that, so we have supplemental insurance, and the committee was, is recommending here that we change our primary provider from Aflac to Assurity. There's some better rates with similar plans, not exact same plans, through Assurity. However, employees will still be able to keep their Aflac plans if they would like to do so. Also, the flex spending, flex spending account, we're making the recommendation to switch to Avera, because the total cost there with Avera for the flex spending accounts is less than Aflac. Also, with the employee assistance program, the committee recommended that we renew at the three-session-per-employee model. However, I believe because of the really important service that they provide, and because I'm privy to the number of... service that they provide, and because I'm privy to the number of individuals that utilize Employee Assistance Plan for any number of things, whether it be our emergency personnel or any employee, there was a small increase to go from three sessions allowed per year to five sessions. I'd recommend that we do that. That is a little bit more per employee per month, but I think well worth it, saving money in the long run, if there is an instance where an employee needs to access that service. So, I'm happy to answer questions, but again, this is a committee recommendation, and I just kind of upped the committee recommendation on the EAP, primarily because they didn't have the same information that I have in regards to the frequency of use for the Employee Assistance Program.
Any further commission discussion? Would anyone from the public like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
Furtick.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Mybon.
Minner.
Aye.
Moser.
Abstain, same reason.
Once again, I'm an employee of Avera Health, so I'm going to abstain from this as well. With that, the motion passes. There being no other business on tonight's agenda, I will ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss contractual litigation and personnel matters under South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, everyone.